Okay, I've got six o'clock, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. And first off, Casey, can you please provide the call-in information? On public comment?
Yes, so the telephone number is one six six nine nine zero zero. Eight, or I'm sorry, six eight three three, and the meeting ID number is nine six two. Four two zero three seven five six six.
Thank you, and can we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Peterson?
Here.
Commissioner Blaco?
Here.
Commissioner Carey?
President.
Commissioner Pritzos?
Here.
Commissioner Rossin?
President.
Commissioner Vanderwell?
Here.
Assistant City Attorney Allison McCormick?
Here.
Assistant Community Services Director Armando Arnell.
Here.
Thank you, so we're going to open it up for public comment. On any item on or off the agenda, do we have any callers waiting to comment?
So if you are calling in, press star nine to request to speak. And as of right now, we don't have anybody, would we like to read the email now or at the agenda item?
Let's, if it's for a specific agenda item, let's hold off and read it for that item.
I don't see any other callers wishing to speak at this time.
Okay, so let's close public comment and move on to the approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Vanderwell, I move to approve the agenda.
Commissioner Blake, all second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Vanderwell and a second by Commissioner Blaco, can we do a roll call vote?
Your me, Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Blaco?
Aye.
Commissioner Carey?
Aye.
Commissioner Pritzos?
Aye.
Commissioner Rossin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vanderwell?
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously, next is approval of the minutes, first is the review and possible approval of the minutes of the June 2nd, 2020 Planning Commission Study Session.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Vanderwell, I move to approve the minutes of the June 2nd, 2020 Planning Commission Study Session.
Commissioner Blake, a second.
Thank you, I have a motion by Commissioner Vanderwell and a second by Commissioner Blaco, can I please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Blaco?
Aye.
Commissioner Carey?
Aye.
Commissioner Pritzos?
Aye.
And Commissioner Rossin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vanderwell?
Aye.
Thank you, passes unanimously, second is the review and possible approval of the minutes of the June 4th, 2020 Planning Commission Meeting. Can I get motion?
I'll make a motion, Commissioner Blaco, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 4th Planning Commission Meeting.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rossin will second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Blaco and a second by Commissioner Rossin, can we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Blaco?
Aye.
Commissioner Carey?
Aye.
Commissioner Pritzos?
Aye.
Commissioner Rossin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vanderwell?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes unanimously, next is our public hearing items, first is PCN 19-0040, consideration of impossible action on two requests, for a site at 555 Highland Ranch Parkway, the first request is MPA 20-0001 to amend the comprehensive plan land use designation, and the second is RZ 200001, which is to rezone single-family residential to multifamily residential and rezone general commercial to multifamily residential.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Commission, for the record, Sienna Reed with the Planning Division, presenting the first of two agenda items associated with the Five Bridges Project tonight. Before I get going, I do want to check in really quick and just ensure that you can see the full slides and the audio in terms of what you're hearing is good.
Yes, we can see it and hear you.
Perfect, great, well, go ahead and get going, so before you, for consideration, as part of this agenda item are two requests, the first is a comprehensive planned land use amendment, and the second is a rezoning request. As you're likely familiar, the Five Bridges Project Site currently consists of one parcel, almost 387 acres in size, it's located northwest of the intersection of Pyramid Way and Highland Ranch Parkway, and the comprehensive planned land use amendment and rezoning request for this agenda item are each located within this larger parcel. In terms of background, development of the site that was just shown on the previous slide was initially approved about two years ago in July of 2018. Entitlement requests approved at that time included a development agreement, annexation, comprehensive planned land use amendment, and rezoning requests. The development agreement permitted a minimum of 1,200 and a maximum of 1,800 dwelling units within that project area, as well as commercial or multifamily development along Highland Ranch Parkway. Subsequently, in February of this year, an amendment to the development agreement was also approved. Modifications to the agreement at that time resulted from further analysis of the site and land and infrastructure plans by the master developer. While there were various changes made to address ownership, clarify permitted residential uses, address previously disturbed land, and then further modify the timing and scope of infrastructure improvements, it's important to note that the number of permitted residential units did not change with that first amendment. And so for this current agreement that's in place, entitlement requests to allow for the development of duplex or townhome uses do not require an amendment of that agreement, provided that the total number of dwelling units complies with permitted units. At this time, the master developer is seeking to develop duplex and townhome units and has submitted comprehensive planned land use amendment and rezoning requests that will enable those uses. Moving on, existing and proposed comprehensive planned land use designations are shown on this slide. As you can see on the right-hand portion of the slide, the multifamily residential 14, or MF14, land use designation, which is the blue-green color, is proposed for two areas within the Greater Five Bridges Project Site. Fifteen acres located to the north of Highland Ranch Parkway that are designated commercial, and 13.81 acres generally within the center of the Five Bridges Project Site that are designated intermediate density residential, or IDR, would change to the proposed MF14 land use designation. Should the comprehensive planned land use amendment be approved, a total of 28.81 acres, which equates to approximately 7.4% of the current Five Bridges Project Area, would be designated MF14. The remainder of the Five Bridges Project Area would retain the existing IDR land use designation that is shown in beige. The associated rezoning requests apply to those same two areas that you can see on this slide. The 15-acre zone C2 along Highland Ranch Parkway and the 13.81-acre zoned SF6, generally within the center of the Five Bridges Project Site, would each be rezoned to MF2, which supports a maximum of 14 dwelling units per acre and allows for a wider range of residential uses compared to single-family zoning districts. This slide gives the Commission a general sense of the comprehensive planned land use amendment and rezoning requests in relation to the conceptual land plan for Five Bridges, and this is the land plan dated November of 2019. The 15-acre portion of the site adjacent to Highland Ranch Parkway is generally located within Five Bridges Village 1, and then the 13.81-acre portion of the site is generally within Village 5 in the center of the site. Shifting gears here to findings, so findings for both the comprehensive planned land use amendment and rezoning requests under consideration tonight have been grouped by topic. These topics include conformance and consistency, compatibility and public notice. Conformance and consistency findings address conformance of the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan and consistency with the City of Sparks Comprehensive Plan. So first off here, finding CP1 for the comprehensive planned land use change requires the request conform with the land use and intensity designation in the regional plan. Here, the entire Five Bridges Project Site has a Tier 2 land designation and is also located within the Truckee Meadows Service Area, or TMSA. Residential density for Tier 2 lands is limited to 30 dwelling units per acre for the regional plan, and the proposed multifamily residential 14 land use designation allows for a density range of 10 to less than 14 dwelling units an acre, which is below and certainly in compliance with the Tier 2 maximum density standard. In addition, portions of the 28.81 acres proposed to change the MF14 land use designation are also identified as development constrained for the regional plan, and this is due to the presence of slopes of 30% or greater. The comprehensive plan encourages preservation of such slopes, and the Sparks Municipal Code requires a two-to-one ratio of non-constrained land be preserved as open space for all areas with slopes over 30% that are developed, and that is to implement the regional plan policies for development constrained areas. Per finding CP2, the comprehensive planned land use amendment must implement the goals of the comprehensive plan, and then finding Z1 for the zoning requires the rezoning request also be consistent with the comprehensive plan. As discussed in previous slides, the request before you tonight would apply that MF14 land use designation and MF2 zoning district to a total of 21.81 acres. And the application of this land use and zoning district supports high-density single-family and low-density multifamily housing products, such as townhomes and duplexes commonly referred to as missing middle housing. These housing types offer alternative options to detach single-family homes and can provide homeownership opportunities at lower price points. For these reasons, the comprehensive planned land use amendment and associated rezoning request supports not only goal H2 of the comprehensive plan, but also policies CF8 and H2 that collectively encourage housing type diversity throughout the city. In response to a commission, a question raised by Commissioner Carey during the study session, staff did go take a further look at the fiscal health analysis that was prepared for the city in 2019 in regards to the supply of land for residential uses for which the intermediate, or excuse me, the MF14 land use designation falls into, and what we found was that this category falls into a density category that covers 7.27 to 14.5 dwelling units per acre, and all lands designated IDR are included within that category. And so it's important here to note that such lands accommodate detached single-family housing, rather than a range of housing types that would be anticipated under the MF14 land use designation and associated MF2 zoning district. So in terms of that land use and zoning, those designations certainly more clearly support housing type diversity with allowed uses that include not only single-family detached housing, but duplex and multifamily uses, and then the minimum density of 12 dwelling units per acre that's required per the MF2 zone also helps to support a higher density and more diverse housing product. Also, the proposed requests would remove the opportunity for a wide variety of commercial uses to establish at the entrance of the Five Bridges Project Site. However, future commercial use opportunities do exist in close proximity. These include commercial designated lands located to the south side of Highland Ranch Parkway, and then also within the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development on both the west and east sides of Pyramid Way. Taking a look into that long-term fiscal health analysis as it relates to employment lands, that analysis shows a supply for retail uses that exceeds forecasted demand by about 266 acres. And so noting this, the proposed request would not adversely impact the supply of land for commercial uses and does comply with policy MG4 that supports an adequate supply of land for employment generating uses. And then lastly, in regards to steep slopes, it is important to note that those are present within the Five Bridges Project Site and on portions of the site where land use and rezoning requests are proposed. And so here, the comprehensive plan, as briefly discussed, does encourage the preservation of slopes and other unique geological features, but quote also further reduces land area that can be disturbed as that slope increases. And further, the development agreement requires compliance with those regulations for naturally occurring slopes and limits the total area to be cleared, graded, or otherwise disturbed to 267 acres. Shifting here to the fiscal impact of the request before you tonight, an updated fiscal impact analysis was provided with these requests, it is requests, it was assuming 1,220 residential units and no commercial space for an expanded site that totals just a bit over 421 acres. The previous fiscal impact analysis that was dated June of 2018 assumed 1,223 residential units, so fairly similar there, but it also assumed a bit over 141,000 square feet of general commercial space. So due to the removal of that commercial space and expansion of the site area, the updated fiscal impact analysis does increase the length of roadways that are projected to be dedicated to the city by about 200,000 square feet. Noting those changes, the analysis estimates the fiscal impact to the city would produce a positive fiscal impact of approximately $700,000 over the 20-year analysis period. With regards to infrastructure and facilities and those policies in the comprehensive plan, the development agreement specifies the timing and scope of improvements needed to provide city services at acceptable service levels. Roadway and intersection improvements, secondary access, sewer collection system improvements, water transmission facilities and improvements, and flood control and drainage improvements are identified to serve between 1,200 and 1,800 total units. In support of the current request, the applicant provided an updated trip generation letter as well as sewer and water studies analyzing development of the Five Bridges Project Site with solely residential development. That trip generation letter finds trips associated with 1,220 units will result in traffic impact that's less than or similar to the trips initially analyzed in 2017. The sewer study finds existing sanitary sewer mains, trunk mains, and interceptors have available capacity to serve anticipated residential units, and that study was taking a specific look at 1,241 units. So here it's important to note that should development exceed 1,650 equivalent residential units, the agreement does set forth sanitary sewer collection system upsizing at that point in time. Also provided was the preliminary water service study assessing the ability of the Sun Valley General Improvement District to supply potable water to the Five Bridges Project Site. That included associated costs, and here really, what's important to note is the agreement does require the master developer to construct all on and off-site water facilities. So with the agreement in place and the updated fiscal impact analysis, it is staff's view that the request complies with policies MG5 and CF1 that address the fiscal implications to provide public services and the provision of city services at acceptable service levels. Moving on with this slide, two findings that relate to compatibility. Here we have finding CP3 for the comprehensive planned land use and finding Z2 for the rezoning, each looking at how the requests are compatible with surrounding land uses. So for the requests associated with the 15 acres located to the north of Highland Ranch Parkway, the MF14 land use designation would serve as a transition between commercial designated lands located to the south and east and the IDR designated lands located to the north and west. The associated rezoning from C2 to MF2, noting that it's a conforming zoning district, would likewise serve as a buffer between single-family uses in the SF6 zone to the north and future commercial uses that can establish to the east in the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development, as well as the C2 zone to the south of Highland Ranch Parkway. For the requests in the center of the Five Bridges Project Site, changing the land use and zoning as proposed is compatible with the surrounding IDR land use and SF6 zoning. With a density range of 6 to less than 10 dwelling units per acre, the IDR land use supports the highest density of single-family uses, and while the MF14 land use designation supports more varied housing types, the 10 to less than 14 dwelling units per acre density range is only moderately denser and is appropriate adjacent to that IDR land use designation. In addition, application of the conforming MF2 zone would, as has been discussed, permit a greater variety of residential uses than is allowed by the existing SF6 zoning. However, here it's important to note that the MF2 zoning is the lowest-density multifamily residential zoning district, and the SF6 zoning district is the highest-density single-family residential zoning district available in the City of Sparks. So the single-family duplex and multifamily building uses permitted in the MF2 zone with that maximum density of 14 dwelling units per acre are compatible adjacent to single-family uses that are permitted in the SF6 zone, and those can establish with that maximum density of 7.3 dwelling units per acre. So here, findings that relate to public noticing, CP4 and Z3 each work to make sure that required public notice is given per state law and code. For both requests, the Planning Commission and City Council meetings do function as the public hearings, and with the proposed comprehensive land use amendment, mailed notices for a neighborhood meeting were provided to all property owners at a minimum within 750 feet of the site. That neighborhood meeting was conducted by the applicant's representative on June 8th of this year, and nine people attended that meeting, those that did attend expressed concerns about development of the Greater Five Bridges Project Area, including development of homes on ridge lines in a manner that would be visible from unincorporated properties to the north, traffic impacts and impacts to groundwater due to municipal wells. And then in addition, for the rezoning, mailed public notice was also provided at a minimum to all property owners within 750 feet, and both requests were published in the Reno Gazette Journal for that notice by publication. So just to wrap it up here for public comment, there is one public comment that Casey will read, it is in opposition to the request, but that is the only written correspondence that we've received, and I've received no calls on this particular item. So with that, I'll go ahead and conclude my presentation and be available for questions at the appropriate time. Staff is recommending approval of the requested comprehensive planned land use amendment rezoning requests, and should the Commission need further slides, those will be available with recommendations later.
Thank you, Sienna, do any of the commissioners have questions for staff at this time? Commissioner Carey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I had some other questions, but I'll wait till after the public comment, I just had a technical question. Sienna, thanks for the additional info about my question from the, about multifamily from the study session. I think where I was kind of going with that question, I was more interested in seeing if we have enough acreage for that multifamily, around the 10 dwelling units per acre within the city, I know in the staff report, you justify that there, you justify the recommendation of approval that there's enough commercial that's that's planned for within the city to handle that 20-year period. I was wondering what you were able to find out in terms of acreages, if there is enough multifamily that is, that is planned for in the city around that 10 dwelling units per acre. When I looked through the study, it was something like that, that study projected that there was 3,050 units, that was the demand, and that would take up 305 acres of multifamily land uses. I was just curious with, if we have enough multifamily land uses in our, in our comprehensive plan or...
Well, to, to go ahead and respond to your, your question, Commissioner Carey, I mean, you're correct in terms of looking at the long-term fiscal health analysis. I think what's important to note is that the 10 dwelling units per acre that you're referencing, that particular density falls within a category in terms of that analysis that encompasses high-density single-family and low-density multifamily, so it is spanning, as I mentioned, 7.27 to 14.5 dwelling units per acre. The other categories that are of higher density are firmly multifamily, so moderate density gets up to 14.5 to 30, and then higher density is above 30, so we do have adequate supplies of land designated for those moderate-density multifamily and high-density multifamily categories per the study, but teasing out kind of the proportion of single-family versus multifamily within the high-density single-family slash low-density multifamily category is, is quite difficult, and so that's why I really wanted to note in kind of responding to your question, that the entire IDR land use designation is classified in that particular category. And with zoning districts of SF6 and SF7 that conform, there's, there's definitely single-family product that is included in that land supply, and so to the extent that you have, you know, conforming MF2 zoning to the MF14 land use, the city does have, you know, some MF2 zoning, there's also a lot of flexibility in the planned unit developments, so it's difficult to say exactly what is the total supply that's going to accommodate just multifamily development, because with that flexibility, you might not be getting multifamily development, you might not be getting a duplex or even a townhome on that kind of attached single-family side of things. So given that flexibility, it's, it's difficult to say exactly what the, what the acreage demand is and isn't, within that category, there are 383 net acres identified as available. But again, I think what's important with the MF2 zoning is that it's standard zoning, it doesn't necessarily allow for a, a lack of a minimum density, it does have that 12 dwelling units per acre, so you know, assuming development were to proceed forward under an MF2 zone, you would actually have a higher-density product, whether that's attached single-family, small lot single-family, or say, a duplex.
May I have one quick follow-up, Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, and I appreciate that, and I understand, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. I get what you're saying with, with the zoning, and it's, it's different than with the land uses, and how that study kind of broke them out, it was a little bit weird. So you're generally saying, just so I understand it, that there is, that there is enough of this type of density or, or type of product that's proposed with this land use change within our comprehensive plan that, that's on the books and, and is out there within the city.
There's, there's a 383 acres identified as surplus for the density category that spans high-density single-family. for the density category that spans high-density single-family and low-density multifamily. There is no guarantee that you would get a wide range of diverse housing products, given that the lower end of that density category includes SF6 and SF7 zoning. So I would say that the MF2 zoning does support higher density and more diverse housing types.
Thank you, Sienna. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? All right, Casey is the applicant on the call.
They are, and I will allow them to speak now.
Okay.
Good evening. Can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. For the record, Mike Raely with Christie Corporation. Also on the call is Blake Smith and Blake Smith Jr. with Five Bridges Development Company. I think Sienna did an excellent job going through the requests and the findings. I know it tends to sound fairly complicated from an entitlement perspective, but in reality, this is a fairly simple request, just to rezone and redesignate those two areas to the multifamily zoning and designation, which will really allow for some diversification in the housing types that are offered within Five Bridges, allow for some increased higher-density attached single-family type uses. So we think it's a fairly simple request. I know it sounds fairly complicated when you read through all the literature, but in reality, it really is fairly simple. So we're happy to address any questions you might have and are available anytime you need us.
Thank you, Mike. Do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question, Mike. Why are you proposing the M2 zoning for this project as opposed to higher-density zoning that's allowed under the MF14 land use?
So the, that's a good question. The M2, if you look at what the minimum density requirements are, in order to allow for like a duplex or a townhome-type unit, the M2 is really the best suited for that in order to make sure that we can meet those minimum density requirements, rather than set, for example, the C2 was a minimum, I believe it's 34 units per acre, which there's no way you can meet that density with a townhome, for example. So it gives us a little bit more flexibility in providing some attached single-family products.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I'll open it up for public comment on this item. Casey, can you please repeat the call-in information? And you can go ahead and read the public comment email that was received as well.
The telephone number for call-in participation is 1-669-900-6833, and the meeting ID number is 962-4203-7566. And you'll press *9 to request to speak. We have one emailed comment for this.
Madam Chair.
Before Casey gets started, for the record, this is Allison McCormick. This is two separate items, and each of them does require a separate public hearing.
Okay, so the first one will be for the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Amendment request.
Correct.
Okay.
Members of the Sparks Planning Commission, as the beneficial owner of an adjoining property, APN08344030, in the legal name of my IRA account Equity Trust Company, and on behalf of another adjoining lot owned by Pyramid West Vista's LLC, APN08344031, as its attorney, we oppose the granting of the proposed amendment to the Comprehensive Plan MPA 20-0001 and the proposed rezoning RZ20-0001. The request is inconsistent with the stated purposes of Title 20, zoning and land use controls of the City of Sparks Municipal Code. The granting of the application would not be consistent as applied to this development, which is really spot zoning. Spot zoning such as this was prohibited by the Nevada Supreme Court in Enterprise Citizens versus Clark County Commissioners, 112 Nevada 649918 in 1996. It should be undisputed that the added congestion and increased density of dwelling units would be interest to public health, safety, or welfare, or interest to property, including mine or improvements of the vicinity. Common sense dictates that the increase in population density will bring with it increase in crime, pollution, noise, sanitation, additional road congestion, and loss of quality of life in general. Recall from previous meetings that about the Five Bridges project, that the idea in approving this, approving this project was to avoid another bedroom community by having a mix of commercial property where the occupants could live and work rather than adding to the already unsafe traffic for commuters. It cannot be seriously argued that granting the major deviation is unnecessary for and would be anti-ethical to the preservation and enjoyment of a property right possessed by other property owners in the same vicinity and land use district, and it is not denied to the property for which the major deviation is sought. This is especially true where the adjoining properties annexed to the City of Sparks, including mine, have a three-unit-per-acre subdivision zoning restriction instead of this much smaller 6,000-square-foot silver lot limitation and now even greater urban sprawl density of 14 units per acre. Many adjoining parcels, including mine, have much steeper slopes than the applicants. Finally, granting the major deviation would constitute a spot zoning special privilege inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the vicinity and land use district in which the property is located. A planned unit development is an alternative, could assure maximum build-out of this parcel. Washoe County is in process of, if it has not already occurred, increasing the zoning for parcels within the City of Sparks' sphere of influence to provide for multi-acre residential units rather than the applicants already approved shoebox 6,000-square-foot lots. You have already given this developer much more than an inch. Now it wants to take the proverbial mile. It is respectfully requested that the application and its subparts be denied outright. That's from Bradley Paul Ely.
Thank you. Are there any other callers for this item?
We have two requests to speak. One, the one we're going to start with, has a 707 area code. And I have allowed them to speak now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. My name is Mike Eastman. I live on the north side of the Ridge complex.
Hey, Mike, you have a...
I have two parts.
You have an echo on your phone.
Is that better?
Yes. And we'll give you some extra...
Hang on a second. This, I hope you give me some leeway on a little bit of leeway at the time, because I've got two comments. One of them is at the very beginning, Chair Reed, you, when your assistant there started, you called in, gave us the call-in information. The call-in information, before I could get called in and get my item ID number in, we had already moved beyond public comment. The second part of it would be that you didn't give us any agendas. I have no access to an agenda, so I don't know when we're supposed to speak. On a previous Planning Commission meeting on Zoom, we attempted to call in, and there was never later a chance to call in again. So I tried to get my comments in first, and you'd moved beyond the public comment section before I could even finish dialing the numbers and punching in all the numbers required. The core of my concern, though, is that there's been no addressing, if you take any part of this area and you add and switch from commercial to residential, and then you also take residential areas and make them more high-density, no one has seemed to suggest how many more, how much greater occupancy the entire landslide can manage. If I remember right, you've already approved and only approved 1,200 to 1,800 units, or 1,200 to 1,800 families, living in that area. And I don't see how it's possible that we can increase density down any one part or any two parts and convert commercial to residential without a further discussion of the overall greater numbers that would be allowed in the entire area. I understand the developer's not proposing anything larger yet, but there's no way that he's not going to. And I don't, I think the previous caller was making reference to that as well, that we aren't, we aren't just talking about 1,200 to 1,800 now. We're trying to get in a backdoor for getting a whole lot more, higher density on average than what it first sounded like we're going to. Many of us on this side, on the north side, remain adamantly opposed to any destruction, any effect on that ridge whatsoever. And I hope that you will back up just a little bit. Once again, consider whether you even want to destroy that ridge view like this whole project is going to. Thank you for your time, and I will talk to you again later.
Thank you. Do we have another caller for this item?
We do have another caller. The first three numbers of their phone number is 376, and I have allowed them to speak now.
Good evening, commission members, Madam Chair and staff. My name is Dan Flanagan. I live not adjacent to the property, within a quarter-mile, which I've lived for about the last 39 years. It didn't take long for this amendment to occur, being that this approval just recently was completed. A couple of questions that I have regarding this is, and item number one, the amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, wouldn't that also require, and I guess this is to Sienna, wouldn't that also require an amendment to the regional plan? Number two is the removal of commercial development within any area automatically creates more daily trips within any tributaries or main roads, because the people within the particular subdivision now have to travel a certain amount of distance. And has there been any study on the amount? And there's been no indication of the documents submitted so far. The amount of timeline that the increased amount of mileage the people have to travel as opposed to the commercial development within their subdivision? The other item is, is... Is your requirement is sprinkler system in a particular subdivision, the first phases, you're increasing the density in these first phases by these amendments. By increasing the density, though, doesn't it also require that, number one, that either the fire station get built, they also have to put sprinklers in, and/or one or the other? The other item is the 650 average daily trips that are triggered by the increased density of the multifamily. That would require immediate improvements to Highland Ranch Parkway and the Pyramid Kylie Ranch, excuse me, Sparks Boulevard intersection. I am very concerned and I'm very opposed to the amount of density. Again, I've been out here for almost 40 years and have watched this kind of development. If you want to experience it, come out to our neck of the woods about between 3:30 and 6 o'clock, even during the COVID event we're having, and you come see what the amount of traffic that is going to be generated by an additional increased density of any part of the subdivision. And my other final question is, is by adding the 34.71 acres, does the developer also require to sustain within the maximum amount of 1,800 dwelling units that was originally approved? Again, I oppose this. I believe the regional plan amendment and the development agreement do not coincide with this increased density of this that is proposed under this particular request by the developer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Casey, any other callers on the Comprehensive Plan?
We do not have any other callers at this time.
Okay, so I will close public comment on the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Amendment and then open public comment for the rezoning request. Do we have any callers for the rezoning request?
We do not have any callers at this time. Oh, I apologize. There is one public comment. It is from the 376 phone number and... 365 phone number, and you are able to speak now.
Yes, this was Mike Eastman again. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. This is challenging, because I have to have one device open to watch you on TV and another device open to be able to make the phone call. And I've got to turn one off, I guess. The rezoning is, isn't it, not sometimes the rezoning, the addition of the 37 acres is something that is illusionary to me, because I'm not sure we've ever seen anything that says exactly what we're going to do with that. And I would encourage you guys to take a good look at how that extra 37 acres is going to be used and how much of that area can be used versus how much it will be used. I'd really like to see a strong presentation from the developer exactly how that's going to be, including a map that overlays it. That would be very helpful. That area that is being zoned is contiguous with BLM lands. And I want to also know if there's any intention to allow access to that BLM land from their land right there, which will give a very, very massive amount of people access to these more pristine lands and obviously contribute to the dumping problems that were already occurring out there. It would be, seem to be a far better approach to not allow access to that area, but I'd like to know that, about that as well, how much of an impact it's going to be on this access to the BLM lands. That's all for now.
Thank you. Casey, any other callers?
We do have one additional caller, and their phone number begins with 376. And you are now able to speak.
Hi again, folks. This is Dan. Just real quick, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Say, on the rezoning, I'm sorry, Mr. Eastman, he was commenting on the 34 acres, which is an additional comment, which is lower under PCM 190040. I'm talking about RZ20-001, excuse me, 0001. This is converting the SF6 to the, it's not M2, it's MF2, multifamily residential is the correct titheling for that. The planning department and the amount of traffic study, the documents submitted so far, have no indication. There's just a brief letter that will be accommodated when this density is obviously increased substantially. It does not, the neighborhood meeting we had, the other documents that have been submitted have been very insufficient to discuss the amount of density changes, modifications, or road improvements. Those other items that I mentioned earlier are under MPA 20-0001. I believe the overall regional plan and the plan amendment that was, that was, that Sienna mentioned back in 2017 of the allowed acres does not pertain to where we are at today. The development agreement had been a vague and nebulous agreements that have been modified without public input. We, last meeting we had with the City Council, Jim Rundle, said, stated that there had been numerous amounts of public meetings, neighborhood meetings. And he'd worked with Washoe County to amend the Spanish Springs, the West Spanish Springs Area Plan. This is simply false, and staff needs to look into it. We need to, we as local residents that are being impacted, we would like and are respectfully requesting the documentation of the notifications that occurred to the amendments of the West Spanish Springs Area Plan, because I have talked to the county commissioners in Washoe County. I've talked, and again, been here for almost 40 years, and I've had many discussions with everyone that's still been out here almost as long as I have. And we had no notification whatsoever to any amendments to the original plan that protected those ridge lines as well as dictated the allotment. I was originally on the subcommittee with Washoe County that created the... I was originally on the subcommittee with, uh, Washoe County that created those designations for commercial residential and other types of development in this area and we were not notified. That is simply the cold hard facts here and that needs to be addressed. And, uh, again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other callers?
We do have one additional caller, um, and the beginning of the phone number is 742. You are now able to speak.
Uh, hi. Uh, my name is Rock Cole and just to further the ridgeline discussion, there's some evidence that you guys have not heard. Um, I brought my parcel 28 years ago and under the Sparks, or the Spanish Springs suitability area plan, the ridgeline was protected. Um, in approximately 1998, Granite was trying to put a pit in that and the parcel there were discussing. And it went through various meetings and in the final meeting, one of the conditions were, and I'm going to read it to you additionally, condition 14 says ridge lines shown as those to be protected on the development suitability map of the Spanish Springs Area Plan shall not be disturbed in any way. And in the Spanish Springs Area Plan, most of the ridges around this site are identified as ridges that are visible from Pyramid Highway and the valley and are not to be disturbed. Um, then you took the parcel over, uh, and in that doc, in 2006, the five-year, and I quote, "The five-year extension condition for this permit is hereby removed. This in no way removes the requirements of adhering to reporting, review, and operating requirements contained in the article, aggregate facilities of the Washoe County Development Code under Washoe County jurisdiction. Applicants shall adhere to all requirements imposed by the City of Sparks when they assume responsibility for aggregate pit reviews." In, uh, approximately a little over two years ago, when this thing came up as the quarry, we were advised of a neighborhood meeting and in that, uh, in that document, it said that you could call Mike Riley. I called Mike Riley and he informed me that, "Don't worry," was his words, "don't worry. The ridges and the hillsides are too steep to build on. We're going to be building down in the bottom and don't worry about that and blah, blah, blah." Over a dozen of my neighbors went to the meeting at the library and Chris Dar was also there, Chris Dare, however you say it, and all of them came back with the same thing. And that all came out in the neighborhood meeting for this, uh, a few weeks ago. And it was stated in the same thing, that the ridge lines, the hillsides too steep, wouldn't be built on. Um, in the development agreement, uh, with you guys, and it, this is in writing and I quote, "This is policy RC 23, require new development to preserve and protect significant natural amenities, unique features, i.e. rockout croppings, drainage ways and other natural features." And they state, "The quarry is unique because it can provide for a, enclave type of development pattern that preserves ridge lines and focuses development areas that were previously part of the aggregate quarry and are not suited for development." So that, count them up, that's five times that we've been promised that this ridgeline would be protected. If you count your own hillside ordinance and look at that, it is a, you, your own ordinance protects this. How, how can you take that away from us? Where is your morals to do that to us residents that five times we've been promised? Now granted, one of them was just a spoof at a neighborhood meeting, a lie, but the other four are in writing and are documented. How can you take that away from us?
Thank you, thank you caller. Casey, do we have any other, um, caller for this item?
There are no additional requests to speak.
Okay, thank you. So I will close the public hearing for the rezoning request and open it up to any other questions or further discussion?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Vanderwell, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, Sienna, I have a question. If you can please address, um, the ridgeline because it's my understanding that, um, what is before us tonight has nothing to do with, uh, ridgeline development, if anything.
Uh, the, the request before you tonight, uh, with this agenda item is for a comprehensive plan land use amendment and rezoning request. The locations of those requested changes, one is that within the center of the Five Ridges project site is generally within an area identified as disturbed, um, per the development agreement. The other location adjacent to Highland Ranch Parkway, um, the 15 acres generally associated with Five Ridges Village One, um, that particular area would be subject to the development agreement standards, um, which require compliance with Sparks Municipal Code for slopes, hilltops, and ridges. Um, ultimately, this commission has seen a conditional use permit already for a portion of the Five Ridges, uh, site and that was that, um, conditional use permit that we expect to be amended over time to include other areas. Um, based on listening in on some of the, the concerns expressed during the neighborhood meeting, um, my general sense is that there is a concern for, um, ridge lines generally located to the north of the Five Ridges project site and the actual, um, amendment sites before you tonight are not adjacent to that northern boundary of the Five Ridges project site.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions, Commissioner Vanderwell?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner Carey?
Madam Chair, uh, Sienna, I had a question. What is the fiscal impact of the proposed comprehensive land use change by, by removing the commercial land uses? What is, what is the fiscal impact to the impact fee service area one? I know we're looking at a, at a, at a land use change and the IFSA fees are calculated by service units and not by acres. I was just curious, by removing this commercial land uses and the, and the ability to put in future commercial service units, what does that do to, um, the impact fee service area?
So, um, I'll probably ask Armando Anales to step in and, and give a little bit more detail, but, um, I did want to just kind of preface that, um, all of the studies and land plans that have come forward with Five Ridges have been in the range of 1223 to about 1241, um, units and that is not proposed to change with the documents, um, that were submitted associated, uh, with this current agenda item and that, that number of units is within the, um, development agreement specified unit range of 1,200 to 1,800. So with that, I'll, I'll hand it over.
Commissioner Carey and members of the Planning Commission, Armando Anales, Assistant Community Services Director. So, uh, staff has not looked at a comparison, if you will, of a hypothetical, uh, impact on the impact fee service area. Uh, that, that process of updating the IFSA to include, uh, Five Ridges is, is, uh, is in progress, but, uh, it's not reached a point where, you know, we've, we've, uh, completed that process. Uh, any, any previous, um, any analysis, um, with regard to, uh, the commercial uses that might have, you know, gone on this land, uh, had that, were that zoning to remain, uh, would be hypothetical, uh, and really would vary greatly depending on what the uses. So, uh, in a, in a location like this, for example, they discussed the possibility of a, a self-storage facility, um, you know, that would have a very different impact than, than some more, uh, relatively intense commercial use. So, uh, I, I think it would be fair to say that, you know, staff cannot really address your question, Commissioner Carey.
Okay, fair enough, thank you.
Any other questions, uh, Commissioner Carey?
Yeah, one, one more for Sienna. I was curious about, um, the, the finding about, um, sorry, let me find my notes here. Um, the finding about, um, how this supports policy MG4 and that's maintaining adequate supply of land use, of land for employment generating uses. How does, um, the proposed land use comprehensive plan support that policy when it's eliminating, um, an employment generating land use and replacing it with a residential?
Yeah, so, um, really, conformance with that policy gets back to taking a look at the land supply, um, in the long-term fiscal health analysis. It really documented that there is a surplus of land devoted to retail. Um, and so just kind of digging into the numbers there, um, there's a demand for 114 acres over the 20-year timeframe, uh, with a supply of 379 acres, so that surplus is 266. Um, noting that, um, there are also a fair few, uh, commercial designated lands in very close proximity to the site. So directly to the south of Highland Ranch Parkway, you have commercial designated lands. Uh, to the, uh, east and west of Pyramid Way and Kylie Ranch North, there are commercial designated lands. So noting kind of the, the oversupply documented in that recent study plus the proximity of the, um, other commercial designated lands, staff felt comfortable noting that the proposed request does comply with policy MG4.
For that explanation and clarification on the policy, I appreciate it. Uh, no further questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have questions? All right, thank you. Um, so just to let you know, we will have two motions and for each of them to pass, we would have to have a super majority, which is five votes, um, on each motion in agreement. Um, the first is the comprehensive plan land use amendment request.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Vanderwell, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the comprehensive plan land, land use amendment, MPA 20-0001, associated with PCN 19-0040, based on findings CP1 through CP4 and the fact supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Thank you.
I'll second.
We have a second from, um, Commissioner Pritzos and, um, a motion by Commissioner Vanderwell. Um, any discussion before we vote? Okay, can we have a roll call vote?
Chair, a couple of questions, a couple of comments for the record. Sorry, I didn't have my hand up fast enough. Um, thank you, I appreciate that. I just, um, I have a hard time with, with this proposed land use change. I think, um, you know, from a, from a comprehensive plan standpoint, I'm having a hard time making findings CP2. Um, and I don't concur with staff's recommendation that the proposed land use change is going to implement the goals and policies of the, of the plan. I agree that it's going to help advance the, um, the, the housing, um, policies, which is important to meet that missing metal. I think that was, staff did a good job at doing that. But I, I'm really concerned, um, about how we're applying this fiscal impact study with, um, with, with land use changes. You know, one, one thing that's important for me when I'm looking at comprehensive land changes, I think that's a big deal, that's the heart of what we do here on the Planning Commission. I really take a hard look at policy MG1 and that's have a land use plan that provides a diverse, integrated mix of residential and non-residential land uses. Looking at this proposed land use change, although it's a small area, we're talking 15 acres of commercial, completely eliminated it and making the whole development residential, I don't think advances that policy, which is a very important policy in my mind. Looking at policy MG4 and I appreciate the explanation from, from staff and, and I agree with what they're saying on the, on that there's, appears to be a surplus, but, you know, the proposed land use change is going to eliminate the only acreage within this development that has commercial and it provides the only opportunity for employment and for commercial services. People within Five Ridges in the future are going to need a place to get a, get a gallon of milk, they're going to need a place to go out to eat, they're going to even need a place for unemployment. I just have a hard time removing the opportunity for any sort of use within this development that would help provide commercial services. Um, I get what they're saying in terms of the fiscal impact, um, study and, um, and that, and that abundance, but I, I have a really hard time with the, how this, this bay impact, um, impact fee service area one and, and the, and the, and the fees that we as a commission are, are going to have to look at. You know, land use changes happen all the time and we've seen in this development, we've seen in other developments within impact fee service area one, that when they change, that has, that has a big impact on, on, on how we charge those fees. And I don't feel comfortable, you know, when we look at impacts, you know, increasing those, 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 um, those fees and I think it's going to, it's going to hurt us overall when we're looking at trying to implement the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. And the last point I'd just like to, I would just like to make, I think it's important that we provide that jobs house mix, we need to have an integrated land use mix and try to get away from areas in Spanish Springs that just have one, one type of land use. I think we need to do a better job particularly in this area and I will not be supporting the motion. Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll get off my high horse now.
Thank you. Any other comments before we call for the vote? All right, there's a motion, second, can we go ahead and get a roll call vote?
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
Commissioner Blaco.
Aye.
Commissioner Carey.
Aye.
Commissioner Pritzos.
Aye.
Commissioner Rosson.
Aye.
Commissioner Vanderwell.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Uh, motion passes six to one. Next, yes.
You're, you're muted. I'm sorry. Uh, I just wanted to clarify that the rezone only requires a simple majority.
Oh, thank you.
Comprehensive plan land use amendment is what requires the, the super majority.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. So, um, can I get a motion on the rezoning request?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Go ahead, Commissioner Blaco.
I move to forward a recommendation of approval to city council for the rezoning request, RZ 20-0001, associated with PCN 19-0040, based on findings Z1 through Z3 and the fact supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Thank you.
I'll second again.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Blaco and a second by Commissioner Pritzos. Any discussion? Commissioner Carey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will reluctantly be supporting this motion. I don't, I didn't agree with the, the comprehensive land use plan change, but since that, um, MF14 land use is now assigned on this site, I have no reason other to support the, the proposed motion and, and make all the required findings with the land use being changed.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Can we get a roll call vote?
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
Commissioner Blaco.
Aye.
Commissioner Carey.
Aye.
Commissioner Pritzos.
Aye.
Commissioner Rosson.
Aye.
Commissioner Vanderwell.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Sienna, for your presentation. I guess we'll hear from you soon. All right, next we have, uh, PCN 19-0040, um, consideration of and possible action on five requests for the same site at 555 Highland Ranch Parkway. For, the first request is DA 20-0001, which is to amend the development agreement between the City of Sparks, QK LLC and Five Ridges Development Company to increase the site. Next is ANX 20-0002, which is an annexation of a site from a Washoe County general rural zoning to a City of Sparks agriculture zoning. Then we have MPA 20-0003, which is an amendment to the comprehensive plan land use designation of rural to intermediate density residential and some open space. And- And next is RZ 20-0002, which is a rezone request from agriculture to single-family residential and more some agriculture. And finally, a request to sponsor an amendment to the 2019 Trekkie Meadows Regional Plan.
So, um, again, um, thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the commission. Um, Sienna Reed with the Planning Division presenting the second agenda item that is associated with the Five Bridges Project Site tonight. Um, can everybody see the slides before them, or at least the slide before them currently?
Yes, we can see and hear you very well.
Perfect. Um, okay, so, uh, as noted, uh, by the chair, there are, are five requests associated, uh, with this particular agenda item. Um, and the first of these, um, amendment number two to the development agreement, um, for the Five Bridges Project Site applies to a larger site area uh, than the annexation Comprehensive Plan Land Use Amendment, rezoning, and regional plan amendment sponsorship requests, which are primarily associated with a property that's proposed to be added to the Five Bridges Project Site. So, uh, to give you a visual here, uh, the area bound in red on this slide shows the Five Bridges Project Site as proposed for expansion. Um, the parcel that would be added is shown in black hatching, uh, and it totals 34.71 acres inside. If this property is added to the Five Bridges Project Site, that site would ultimately increase to a total of 421.58 acres. Uh, the annexation Comprehensive Plan Land Use Amendment, rezoning, and regional plan amendment sponsorship requests apply only to the property that is shown in black hatching, and that is currently under Washto County jurisdiction. Uh, with regards to background, uh, for the Five Bridges Project Site, much of this information was covered with the previous agenda item. Um, so I'll be brief and note that the initial entitlements, um, associated with the quarry, as the project was known at that time, uh, were approved in July of 2018. Amendment number one was, uh, to the development agreement, was later processed and approved in February of 2020. And then most recently, uh, you'll remember that tentative map and conditional use permit requests, uh, for portions of the Five Bridges Project Site were considered, uh, by the commission this April. And collectively, uh, the five requests before you tonight, they propose to expand the Five Bridges Project Site and support single-family development on a portion of that expansion area. Um, fair warning, uh, due to the fact that there are five requests associated, uh, with this item, this presentation, um, is a bit lengthy. Um, after giving the commission an overview of the requests, we'll move on to the findings analysis. Uh, but that findings analysis is certainly a little bit beefy. We've done our best to consolidate where possible, and we'll try to move through, uh, the findings as expeditiously as possible. But there, there are definitely quite a few to go through. Right, so in terms of a project overview, uh, should all five of the requests be approved? Um, this slide shows the resulting Five Bridges Project that would be governed by amendment number two to the development agreement. The total project area would encompass 421.58 acres, uh, which includes the 34.71 acre expansion parcel. Uh, with regards to permitted uses, uh, the residential unit number is not proposed to change. A minimum of 1,200 and a maximum of 1,800 residential units would remain permitted. The minimum amount of open space, uh, that must be reserved is 120 acres. And single-family duplex townhomes or multifamily development would be allowed in accordance with adopted zoning districts. Um, commercial uses would also be allowed based on adopted zoning. Um, however, a limited number of commercial uses would be allowed based on proposed Comprehensive Plan Land Use designations and zoning districts, um, that were proposed as part of the previous agenda item, and then also those in association with this agenda item. Uh, and ultimately, uh, the applicant, uh, across the expanded site is seeking a mix of intermediate density residential, or IDR, multifamily residential 14, or MF14, and open space on the Five Bridges Project Site with conforming zoning districts of SF6, MF2, and A5. Uh, this slide, uh, gives the commission a visual in terms of existing and proposed Comprehensive Plan Land Use designations for the 34.71 acre parcel. Currently, the property in its entirety is designated rural in Washto County. Uh, the applicant is requesting City of Sparks Comprehensive Plan Land Use designations of intermediate density residential, or IDR, for the eastern 10 acres of the site and open space for the western 24.71 acres. Uh, for the zoning, the applicant is requesting to rezone the site, uh, again, on that eastern 10 acre portion of the site to SF6, and on the western 24.71 acre portion to A5. Uh, looking at, uh, the changes included in amendment number two to the development agreement, um, these are mostly due to the proposed expansion of the Five Bridges Project Site. Um, however, there are some additional changes proposed, uh, for clarification and update purposes, as well as to address comments received by the Nevada Department of Transportation, or NDOT. Um, in addition to, uh, the increased project acres, uh, on this slide, you can see changes, uh, that would impact section 3.1 of the agreement for permitted uses and density. Uh, these would, uh, together remove references to specific zoning districts associated with permitted uses, and the intent there is really to simplify that portion of the agreement. Uh, gross density requirements, uh, are also proposed to be modified due to the expanded site area. And, um, those gross density calculations, as updated, are based on a minimum of 1,200 and a maximum of 1,800 residential units. So again, no, um, request here to alter those, uh, unit parameters in any way. And then, uh, also, uh, within permitted uses and density, the minimum amount of open space, uh, that must be reserved is increased by 20 acres to a total of 120 acres. Um, also, to address NDOT's comments regarding the timing of roadway improvements, uh, section 3.2, uh, is modified to specify that improvements to the intersection of Highland Ranch Parkway and Pyramid Way shall occur concurrently with the widening of Highland Ranch Parkway. Um, this was the intent of the language, but NDOT brought up a good clarifying, uh, request. And given that the agreement was open, we wanted to be able to address that request. So with those improvements, um, occurring concurrently, what that means is that both improvements would be triggered, um, prior to the 651st residential unit, uh, the segment of Highland Ranch Parkway, uh, between the project entrance and Pyramid Way degrading to level of service D, or the intersection of Highland Ranch Parkway and Pyramid, uh, Way degrading to below level of service E. And that's whichever occurs first. So very similar to, um, all of the language that you've seen before, just trying to, uh, bring forward additional clarity there. Uh, in addition, the allowed disturbance area is updated based on a revised slope analysis. Uh, this results in a 26 acre increase to a total of 293 disturbed, uh, acres allowed. And, uh, the agreement is further updated to reflect the current project status uh, with regard to land use and agreement approvals. Uh, these include Washto County's approval of an emergency access road and council's approval of an agreement with the Sun Valley, uh, General Improvement District, granting use of the city's streets and roads for water transmission facilities. And then lastly, uh, changes to the agreement uh, include a variety of annexation property provisions. Uh, some address, uh, definitions, others address associated entitlement requests. The conceptual land plan for amendment number two to the agreement, um, is shown on this slide. All anticipated development is residential, uh, with townhomes identified in Village 1 at the project entrance, as well as within Village 5 in the center of the site. Single-family lots comprise the remaining development shown, and lots located in the expansion area, uh, which is on the western portion of the site. Um, total approximately 19 single-family lots. While amendment number two would expand the Five Bridges Project Site, um, again, neither the permitted number of residential units or infrastructure and public service requirements necessary to serve those units are proposed to change. Uh, in terms of information provided by the applicant, um, the indication is that, uh, changes to, uh, the agreement are sought to promote better design and circulation through the project site. Uh, to facilitate inclusion of the 34.71 acre parcel, uh, that's proposed for annexation, uh, within the Five Bridges Project Site, the applicant is also requesting council sponsor a regional plan amendment. And so this map shows the relationship of the site, uh, which you can see bound in red, that 34.71 acre, uh, parcel to the Trekkie Meadows Regional Plant Land Designations, as well as the Trekkie Meadows Service Area, which is shown in the thicker black line. Um, as, uh, the site currently has a rural area regional land designation, uh, what is being requested is, uh, a change to the tier-two land designation, as well as, um, changes to include this particular area within the Trekkie Meadows Service Area, and also within the City of Sparks Sphere of Influence. And so before City Council can take final action, uh, on the requests that are part of this agenda item, um, a regional plan amendment to redesignate the site from that rural area, uh, to tier-two land and amend the boundaries of the TMSA and City of Sparks SOI is needed. Um, consistent with past practice, the commission reviews these sponsorship requests and provides a recommendation to council. All right, so, uh, switching gears here and, um, settling in to a certain extent, um, here are the findings, uh, for, um, each of the proposed, um, requests. For brevity, the findings, um, for the development agreement amendment, annexation, comprehensive plan land use amendment, or comprehensive plan land use amendment, excuse me, and rezoning requests have been grouped by topic. These are the same, um, topic groups that, uh, we used in the last presentation, so conformance and consistency, uh, compatibility, and public notice. Um, the regional plan amendment sponsorship is going to be held out of this topic grouping, uh, because we do have new review criteria, uh, included as part of the 2019 Trekkie Meadows Regional Plan that, that need to be discussed. Uh, so, uh, starting first, uh, with conformance and consistency of the requests, um, this is going to be with, uh, either the Comprehensive Plan, state law, or code. And other than the regional plan amendment sponsorship, all of the requests under consideration tonight must be consistent with the City of Sparks Comprehensive Plan. Uh, so this slide focuses on the consistency of the development agreement, uh, with the City of Sparks Comprehensive Plan. Um, as has been noted, um, a couple of times, neither the permitted number of residential units or infrastructure and public service requirements to serve, uh, that development is proposed to change. Um, to support the amendment to the agreement and the associated requests under consideration, the applicant did provide an updated trip generation letter, as well as sewer and water studies analyzing development of the Five Bridges Project Site with solely residential development. And those studies did not, uh, warrant changes to the agreement related to infrastructure and services, and the master developer remains responsible for roadway intersection improvements, secondary access, sewer collection system improvements, water transmission, uh, facilities and improvements, as well as flood control and drainage improvements. Uh, noting that the agreement continues to specify how infrastructure and public services would be adequately provided to support development. Um, it is the opinion of city staff that the proposed changes in amendment number two promote the city's goal of providing adequate services concurrently with the impact of development, while not adversely impacting the consistency of the agreement with the Comprehensive Plan. And that's in support of policies MG5 and CF1. Uh, looking here at conformance and consistency as it relates to the annexation. Uh, the annexation request before you tonight must not only conform to the requirements of Nevada Revised Statutes, Chapter 268, per finding A1, but also the Comprehensive Plan with location of the annexation property in the city's sphere of influence and the seven-year annexation program pursuant to finding A3. Um, here, chapter 268 allows for the city to annex properties that are identified in its annexation program, as well as properties that aren't identified in its annexation, uh, program, provided that those types of annexations, which are often, uh, termed voluntary, are contiguous to city limits, and annexation is requested by 100% of the property owners. And both of those criteria are satisfied in this particular instance. Uh, the property is not currently located in the city's sphere of influence, um, and the city's annexation program, uh, actually expired in 2015. Um, however, as discussed, a request to include the property in the city's sphere of influence would be considered through the regional plan amendment process if city council sponsors the amendment. Uh, additionally, uh, finding A2 requires the annexation request to conform, uh, to 10 annexation findings in Sparks Municipal Code. Um, so these will be covered on the next few slides, uh, with the first of these, first four of these findings shown on this slide. Uh, so as discussed, the property being considered, uh, for annexation is contiguous to city limits on, uh, its eastern property, uh, line side. Uh, in terms of utilities, those would be extended through the existing Five Bridges Project Site, consistent with the agreement, making the extension of city, uh, limits a logical extension. And then annexation would not create an island, uh, simply there because the property is already contiguous, uh, to the city's current corporate boundary. And in regard to expansion, um, to accommodate planned growth, uh, the Five Bridges Project Site, which, uh, totals almost 387 acres currently, was annexed to the City of Sparks in 2018 to accommodate future housing needs. An annexation of the 34.71 acre parcel would support modifications to the land plan that was, uh, previously shown in the presentation that result in improved circulation and promote development of the Greater Five Bridges Project Site, uh, with the units anticipated in the development agreement. Uh, the three annexation findings on this slide relate to utilities, community goals, um, in the city's Comprehensive Plan, and the cost-effective provision of service areas and capital facilities. So in regards to water service, per the agreement, water service will be provided by the Sun Valley General Improvement District, or SIFGID, uh, and the developers responsible for construction of water transmission infrastructure, as well as dedicating water rights to serve future development. Uh, sanitary sewer service is to be provided by the City of Sparks. Um, it would ultimately be provided via the Northwest Sanitary Sewer Interceptor, which is currently located to the east of the project. And then here, per the agreement, the developer is responsible for all new on- and off-site, uh, sanitary sewer improvements. Looking at community goals, um, annexation of the subject property and approval of the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Amendment and rezoning requests associated with this agenda item would ultimately support modifications to the land plan, uh, that result in that improved circulation and promote development of the Greater Five Bridges Project. And supplemental, uh, materials provided by the applicant, and as shown, uh, earlier in terms of the land plan, show approximately 19 single-family residences will be constructed on the site proposed for annexation. Um, this is a small number of homes. Um, however, annexation of the site would still continue to support development of the Five Bridges Project Site, consistent with the agreement. Uh, and that agreement does encourage, uh, a strong and diverse housing market in support of goal H2 in the city's Comprehensive Plan. Uh, with regards to service areas and capital facilities, uh, fire service would be provided from fire station number four, uh, or through, uh, automatic aid with Trekkie Meadows Fire. In addition, um, In addition, um, the agreement continues to serve as the applicant's petition to be included in Impact Fee Service Area Number One. Um, that update, as, um, stated in the last agenda item, is currently underway. Um, and if the subject property is ultimately included in that service area, it would can, uh, contribute to construction of a fire station to serve the area, uh, regional storm drains, sewer and parks improvements. So provided that Amendment Number Two to the agreement is approved, um, it is staff's view that uh, the requested annexation complies with policy CF One uh, that requires the provision of city services at acceptable, uh, service levels. Uh, moving on to the fiscal impact of the annexation, um, the fiscal impact analysis that was submitted uh, was discussed, uh, a bit already under the previous agenda items, so I'll, I'll try and be brief and note that we have an assumption of twelve-hundred-and-twenty residential units, no commercial space and an expanded site area. And ultimately, um, with the removal of that commercial space and the increase of roadway area that would be dedicated to the city, what is estimated is a positive fiscal impact of approximately seven-hundred-thousand dollars. In regards to, um, Owasho County Adopted Community Management Plan, um, this particular area is located, uh, within the Sun Valley Area Plan, which is an element of the Owasho County Master Plan. Uh, the ca- city has not received any comments, uh, from Owasho County on this topic or, or the, um, other requests either. Um, in addition to other factors, here it's, it's just appropriate to note that, um, the applicant has requested that city council sponsorship of a regional plan amendment uh, to include the subject property within the city's sphere of influence, and so um, ultimately, um, should the city council sponsor that requested regional plan amendment, um, that would be heard by the Regional Planning Commission and the Regional Planning Governing Board prior to any city council consideration of the annexation request before you tonight. Okay, uh, moving on to another, um, aspect of conformance and consistency. Um, here relating to the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Amendment and rezoning, um, finding CP One requires the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Amendment conform to the Regional Plan Land Use and Intensity Designations. Um, and as I, I just discussed on the previous slide, the applicant is seeking that regional plan amendment to redesignate the site um, from rural area to Tier Two land and then also to amend the boundaries of the TMSA and City of Sparks sphere of influence. Um, as proposed, um, the intermediate density residential, or IDR, Comprehensive Plan Land Use Designation allows for a density range of six to less than ten dwelling units per acre, and it complies with the maximum density standard of thirty dwelling units for Tier Two land set forth in the regional plan. Um, in addition, the proposed open space designation is also consistent, uh, with that Tier Two land designation because it provides for passive and active, um, open space rather than suburban development. And, uh, lastly, here on this slide, um, portions of the site are also designated development constrained uh, by the regional plan, and this is due to the presence of slopes of thirty percent or greater. Um, this is a small area, um, of the overall thirty-four-point-seven-one acre site. And not only does the Comprehensive Plan encourage, uh, preservation of steep slopes, but again, we have the Sparks Municipal Code that requires that two-to-one, uh, ratio of open space if there is a disturbance of slopes of thirty percent or greater, and again, that is to implement the regional plan. Looking here, um, at finding, uh, CP Two, um, the Comprehensive Plan Amendment must implement the goals of the Comprehensive Plan, and then, uh, finding Z-One, uh, for the rezoning then requires that request to be consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. Uh, application of the IDR and open space land uses and then conforming SF Six and A-Five zoning districts would support single-family housing development on the site and support more broadly the development of the residential units consistent with the development agreement, uh, really there promoting, uh, diverse housing through the City of Sparks. Um, as has been previously discussed, the development agreement specifies the timing and scope of improvements needed to provide city services at acceptable service levels. And, uh, with that agreement in place and the updated fiscal impact analysis that was provided, it is staff's view that the requests comply with policies MG Five and CF One of the Sparks Comprehensive Plan that address fiscal implications to provide, uh, public services and the provision of city services at acceptable service levels. And, um, lastly, here on this slide, in regards to natural features, um, there are steep slopes, as I've noted, in addition to the thirty percent, there are, are uh, slopes that range between fifteen and thirty present on the site as well. Um, and here to, um, manage development on those slopes are our Comprehensive Plan policies as well as our code that requires, um, development, uh, in terms of disturbed area be reduced to slope increases. And again, we have further the development agreement, um, stating that there is a maximum uh, disturbed area that can be cleared, graded or otherwise disturbed, and that is increased, um, to two-hundred-and-ninety-three acres as was previously discussed through Amendment Number Two to the agreement. Alright, uh, moving on to compatibility, uh, which is a new topic, uh, in terms of the findings analysis. Um, the findings on this slide each, uh, focus on compatibility with surrounding land uses. Finding CP Three for the Comprehensive Plan Land Use and finding Z-Two for the rezoning. Um, here federally or homeowners association-owned vacant land is located to the north, south and west of the site. Um, these vacant lands have a rural Owasho County Master Plan Land Use Designation. And as proposed, the open space Comprehensive Land Use Designation would be applied to that western twenty-four-point-seven-one acres of the site. And that open space designation is compatible with the surrounding unincor- unincorporated lands that are designated rural. Um, on the eastern portion of the site, the IDR Comprehensive Plan Land Use is proposed um, to encompass ten acres, and that's compatible with adjacent land to the east that is already designated, um, IDR. And noting that the rezoning request, um, from A-Forty to A-Five for the western, um, portion of the subject site is consistent, um, with the proposed open space zoning, this is um, further consistent with vacant properties, uh, zoned open space by Owasho County. And similar to the Owasho County Open Space Zoning District, here it's important to note that the A-Five zone proposed allows for agricultural and recreation uses by right and requires discretionary review for a limited, uh, number of industrial and utility uses, so they're very similar. Um, in terms of the rezoning request from A-Forty to SF Six on that eastern portion of the site, this is very much consistent with future single-family uses in the adjacent SF Six zone, um, immediately east of the site. Um, in terms of findings regarding public noticing, um, public notice is required for the annexation, Comprehensive Plan Land Use Amendment and rezoning requests with the Planning Commission and City Council meetings functioning as public hearings. Um, notice of the public hearing for the annexation and rezoning, uh, were provided at a minimum uh, to all owners of property within seven-hundred-and-fifty feet of the subject properties, and also, uh, public notice was provided in the Reno Gazette Journal. Uh, for the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Amendment, uh, mailed notices for a ma- uh, neighborhood meeting, excuse me, uh, were provided to all property owners, uh, again, here at a minimum within seven-hundred-and-fifty feet of the subject site. Um, that neighborhood meeting was conducted also on June eighth with the same number of attendees. Um, as I mentioned in the last item, um, nine attendees noting concern regarding development of homes on the ridge lines in a manner that would be visible um, from properties located to the north of the Five Bridges project site, uh, traffic impacts and impacts to groundwater, uh, due to minuscule wells. Alright, so moving on to what I will say is, is the last kind of set of slides as it relates to findings, here we have actual review criteria um, that come from the twenty-nineteen Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. And so given that there are three requests associated with the regional plan amendment, we have three sets of specific, uh, review criteria for each, so um, on this slide, what you can see are, uh, the first three of six review criteria associated with the requested Tier Two land designation. Um, the first here is proximity to Tier Two land. Um, the site is immediately adjacent to existing Tier Two land. Uh, we also have compliance with applicable density requirements. Um, this, uh, has been discussed as it relates to compliance of the IDR land use, uh, with the regional plan. Um, uh, land designations and as requested, should the Tier Two designation be approved, the IDR land use um, is certainly, um, less dense from a residential density perspective than the maximum of thirty dwelling units per acre. Um, and then in addition, or, um, looking at enhanced potential for land use diversity and a mix of housing types, including the site in the Tier Two land designation would support its addition to the Five Bridges project site. Um, and provided that the associated Development Agreement Amendment, Annexation, Comprehensive Plan Land Use Amendment, rezoning requests are approved, um, the agreement would allow for a mix of single-family, duplex, multifamily and townhome housing types supporting overall housing type diversity. Uh, looking at infrastructure availability and connectivity, uh, to existing or planned uh, multimodal transportation opportunities. Addition of the subject site to the Tier Two land designation would further allow for the extension of infrastructure and public facilities. That would be coming through the existing Five Bridges project site. Um, and that would include sidewalks and multi-use paths that were, are required to be constructed by the developer. Uh, in regards to other multimodal transportation opportunities here, um, the Five Bridges project site is not identified in the twenty-forty regional transportation plan uh, from a transit, uh, service provision perspective, so the main, uh, multimodal improvement would be sidewalks and multi-use paths. Uh, as proposed, um, approximately ten acres of, uh, the site would be designated IDR and the remainder would be designated open space. Um, noting that that is a relatively small amount of acreage, substantive impacts to other priority lands, um, as designated in the regional plan are not anticipated if the proposed regional plan amendment were to be approved. Um, here shifting to the second aspect of the regional plan amendment sponsorship, uh, which is expansion of the Truckee Meadows Service Area, or TMSA, to include the almost thirty-five acre site. Uh, the first four review criteria that you can see on this slide were already discussed as part of the review criteria for Tier Two land. So really just regarding the last bullet, uh, which focuses on regional need for additional land uses or purposes, um, application materials indicate that the addition of the site to the TMSA will support better design and circulation for the Five Bridges project, which will facilitate development of the project and assist in meeting regional housing needs. Um, and lastly, here we have the review criteria for requests seeking to amend the City of Sparks sphere of influence that are shown on this slide. Um, changed conditions in the vicinity of the request include uh, not only the proposed amendment, uh, to the agreement, but also associated entitlement request for the current Five Bridges project site, um, which is adjacent to the annexation parcel. Uh, and amending the boundary of the sphere of influence to include the site allows for the absorption of what would be an otherwise largely undevelopable parcel into the adjacent Five Bridges project site. Uh, the residential units that are permitted in the agreement are anticipated, uh, to assist in meeting demand for additional housing in the region that is due to population growth. And as proposed, the proposed regional plan amendment request would support, uh, the development of these residential units. Uh, in regards to conferring with Owasho County staff on the SOI boundary change, uh, City of Sparks staff discussed, um, all of the requests before the commission tonight, um, as well as what the ultimate regional plan amendment process would be with, uh, Owasho County staff. Um, and that was done verbally. And then in addition, all of the requests, uh, were distributed for Owasho County uh, for review and comment, and, uh, no comments have been received by, uh, City of Sparks staff. Um, in regards to this agenda item, um, I did not receive any calls or emails, um, as of today. And, um, with that, I'll conclude, uh, this presentation. Uh, staff is recommending approval of each of the five requests uh, for consideration as part of this agenda item.
Thank you, Sienna, that was a very comprehensive presentation, I really, um, gotta hand it to you, you hung in there. Um, do any of the commissioners have questions for staff? On this item? Alright, moving on, do we have the applicant, um, that would like to provide any in, in, in additional information or comment?
Mike Raely is able to speak now.
Good evening, everyone, uh, again, for the record, Mike Raely with Christie Corporation, representing Five Bridges Development Company. Um, yeah, I don't think there's much I could add to CS' presentation, she did a great job, um, was very thorough. Um, once again, this is, uh, a kind of a cumbersome entitlement process for what really boils down to a fairly simple, uh, change and request. Um, as you can see, the majority of the site, about two-thirds of it, will remain as permanent dedicated open space. It really just allows for a little bit of better circulation and layout within the project itself. The property is under common ownership with Five Bridges, it has very limited access and availability of infrastructure, should it remain outside of the project, but with Five Bridges, it's essentially all the, the infrastructure being extended to the front door, so to speak, so I think it's a logical request and we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mike, do any commissioners have questions for the applicant? Seeing none, um, let's open up for public comment, and I'm assuming that we will need public comment for each item separately.
That's correct, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, so we'll open up public comment for the development agreement first, and Casey, can you please repeat the call and information?
Telephone number for call and participation is one-six-six-nine-nine-zero-zero-six-eight-three-three, and the meeting ID number is nine-six-two-four-two-zero-three-seven-five-six-six, and you'll press star nine to request to speak. I do have one caller already wanting to speak and their phone number begins with three-seven-six. You are now able to speak.
Greetings again, folks, uh, Dan Flanagan here, uh, listening to the presentation, Sienna, uh, very well done, I, I have some questions. Um, regarding your vote you're about to take to support or to, uh, present this in front of the regional plan, uh, and it's very interesting because I can't sit and question any of you. Uh, I'm talking to basically a screen with you in the background. We can't convey or have our questions answered, and it doesn't appear that you are addressing anything we're saying anyway, so that being said, uh, a couple items that you said was about the trip generation letter. This creates a substantial impact, and just a letter instead of a reanalysis of the tra- traffic impact is interesting and inappropriate. You don't reference Sparks Section Two-zero-point-zero-four-point-zero-one-one, uh, which Karen Melby and I had worked very closely to amend, and that was basically retired when she retired. Uh, the issue of mining water where you're taking from the SIFGID water supply and then taking the sewer, uh, distribution through the, um, City of Sparks is inappropriate. The other item is the IDR designation all by itself is very interesting. It, the IDR designation seems to The IDR designation seems to cover anything and everything that you don't want to designate as anything else and has no development restrictions. I don't see anything in the codes where that you simply put it in a designation what is comfortable that'll match your comprehensive area and amendment plans. And I'd like to know who you contacted at Washoe County for comments on this proposed agenda item, because we'd like to contact them so at least us, who's in Washoe County, have the ability to vote them out of office, unlike we can do in the City of Sparks. And a fairly simple development, interesting comment that was made by the developer's representative. Fairly simple, that's fine, but you know as well as I do that none of you would allow the type of development push-through on a major impact in this area if it was anywhere adjacent to where you live. And obviously, you're not going to comment on my comments. So everybody, have a good evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, caller. Do we have any additional public comment on this item?
I do not see any additional requests to speak. Oh, I am sorry, one additional request came up. Caller beginning in seven four two, you are now able to speak.
Hi, Rock Cole here. I know you're tired of hearing this. And quite frankly, I know that all the wheels have been greased. And this thing was approved a long time ago. This is just like a kangaroo court for a little hearing for us people out here that mean nothing to you. Of course, if you lived out here, it'd be different, but I'm sure that you could care less. Except for you, Scott, I will give you, at least you ask questions and present commentary. The rest of you sit there like drones. When you ask for comments or questions, it's like crickets in the background. What's wrong with you people? You call yourself planners? Why don't you call yourself an approval committee? Because that's what you are. All you do is approve. It's really a joke. I'm ashamed of all of you, again, with one exception. You know, in this world, there's such a thing as karma. And you guys could care less about us. And so could the developer, because it's all about money. All you care about is money. City of Sparks for their tax revenues, and the developer for his money. At what point is enough? Shame on all of you. Shame on all of you. I'm done.
Thank you. Casey, any additional callers?
I do not have any additional requests to speak at this time.
Thank you. So with that, I will close the public comment for the development agreement and open public comment for the annexation petition. Do we have any callers on the annexation petition?
I do not see any requests to speak.
Okay, I will go ahead and close public comment on the annexation and open public comment for the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Amendment request. Do we have any callers?
There are no requests to speak.
All right, thank you. Let's close public comment on the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Amendment and open public comment for the rezoning requests. Do we have any public comment?
No requests to speak.
Thank you. So let's close the public comment for rezoning requests and open public comment for the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan Amendment Sponsorship Request. Do we have any public comment?
I do have one request to speak. The phone number beginning in seven four two, you are now able to speak.
This is Rock again, and I'm sure you guys are just thinking, I hope this guy shuts up so we can get to dinner. But I would like to say one thing. We were told in the appeal process with the city council that there was over ten meetings and public notices sent out on the demise of our ridgeline. You know what? I want proof of that. And I think you owe us proof that this ridgeline was deemed not protected or... How, I don't know how you can take that away without giving us some proof. Shouldn't you have to uphold what is in place? With a swipe of a pen, it just goes away? And in the neighborhood meeting of this, the developer stated that there was over a hundred acres of developable land that was not being developed. Why can't you take that hundred acres, take all the homes off the ridgelines, offset them down to where we don't have to look at them and everybody else in this valley that you care nothing about because it's not your precious city? And put them in that hundred acres. It's a win-win-win. It's a win for the City of Sparks. You get your tax dollars. It's a win for the developer because he gets his homes, although he doesn't get the view lots. And it's a win for us, because we get something that was promised to us five times. Please take that in consideration. I know you will, Scott. I was at the quarry meeting back when we could go to the meetings. You know, you even had, and I don't even know her name, but she was sitting on the left. You know, she didn't even know what a detention basin was? A detention basin? Isn't that a little embarrassing for a planning commission? I rest my case.
Thank you, caller. Casey, do we have any other callers?
We have no additional requests to speak.
Thank you. So I will close public comment for the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan Amendment, and that ends our public comment. And we will bring it back to the commission for discussion. Any question, additional questions from the commissioners? Seeing none. We have five motions. And Allison, for clarification, can you tell me which ones will require a supermajority?
Madam Chair, before we start, I have some clarification from one of the speakers, and I apologize, it was on the first, it was on our first agenda item, but they had spoken about fire and a fire station and things like that. And I would just like to point out that on page sixteen of this report, in the third paragraph, in the third bullet point, and I will read it. I apologize. It states, "Equipping all dwelling units and commercial structures intended for or used for human occupancy with fire suppression systems."
Thank you, Commissioner Vanderwell, for that clarification. Anything else from the other commissioners? Okay, so go ahead, Allison, on the motions. We're going to tell me which ones will require the supermajority.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Only the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Amendment, MPA twenty dash zero 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 three, requires a supermajority. The other items are a simple majority.
Thank you for that clarification. So we will have five motions. The first is the request for the development agreement. I'll take any motions.
I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to find Amendment Number Two to the Development Agreement, DA one eight dash zero 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 one, associated with PCN nineteen dash zero zero four zero, consistent with the Sparks Comprehensive Plan, and to forward a recommendation of approval to Sparks City Council.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Mr. Vanderwell, second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Blaco and a second by Commissioner Vanderwell. Any discussion? Seeing none. Can we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Blaco?
Aye.
Commissioner Carey?
Aye.
Commissioner Pritzos?
Aye.
Commissioner Rossen?
Aye.
And Commissioner Vanderwell?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Next is the request for the annexation petition. Can I get a motion?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Vanderwell, I move to forward a recommendation of approval to City Council for the annexation request ANX two zero dash zero 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 two, associated with PCN one nine dash zero zero four zero, based on findings A one through A four, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Vanderwell and a second by Commissioner Pritzos. Any discussion?
I will share a couple of comments for the record, if I may.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I concur with staff's recommendation on this annexation request. And I believe that I can make the required findings. I agree that this proposed annexation is a logical extension of the city limits, and I think that it will help support goal H two and policy CF one of our comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Any other discussion? Can we go ahead and do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Blaco?
Aye.
Commissioner Carey?
Aye.
Commissioner Pritzos?
Aye.
Commissioner Rossen?
Aye.
Commissioner Vanderwell?
Aye.
Thank you. Passes unanimously. The next is the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Amendment Request. Do we have a motion?
Commissioner Blaco, make a motion.
Go ahead.
Move to approve the Comprehensive Land Use Amendment, MPA two zero dash zero 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 three, associated with PCN nineteen dash zero zero four zero, based on findings CP one through CP four, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Thank you.
Second. Mr. Vanderwell, second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Blaco and a second by Commissioner Vanderwell. Any discussion before we vote? Commissioner Carey?
Yeah, I'm going to support the proposed Comprehensive Land Use Change. I do have some reservations about adding additional residential land uses in this area. You know, I would prefer that there would be a better mix of land uses. I think in my comments on the previous agenda item, kind of outlined why. However, in this instance, I think that the requested IDR land use change is very minor, and it is consistent with generally what the planned land uses are in this development. Overall, I think that the proposed open space and IDR land use changes are very minor in nature and therefore consistent with the goals and policies of our plan and the land use for this area. But I think overall, we need to do a much better job of integrating land uses and getting, locating services and employment near residential, particularly in the Spanish Springs Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Any further discussion? With that, can we please do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Blaco?
Aye.
Commissioner Carey?
Aye.
Commissioner Pritzos?
Aye.
Commissioner Rossen?
Aye.
Commissioner Vanderwell?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. The fourth motion is for the rezoning request.
I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for the rezoning request, RZ two zero dash zero 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 two, associated with PCN nineteen dash zero zero four zero, based on findings Z one through Z three, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Thank you. Second.
Commissioner Vanderwell, second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blaco and a second by Commissioner Vanderwell. Any discussion before Commissioner Carey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I concur with staff's recommendation of approval and can make the required findings on this rezone request. I just wanted to express my appreciation to our staff and the applicant. We're going for the A five zoning in this particular area. I agree that it's compatible with the zoning of our neighbors in Washoe County. I think, although I believe that the A forty zoning on this property when it was annexed into the city would probably be sufficient for what the applicant wants to do. I appreciate that they are going for the rezone request to make for the A five, which is more compatible with Washoe County. And I would hope that our partners in the region, Washoe County, would show the same courtesy to the city when they are considering rezoning cases near the city. And I appreciate the accommodation in this, and I will be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Any other discussion before we vote? All right, can we go ahead and get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Blaco?
Aye.
Commissioner Carey?
Aye.
Commissioner Pritzos?
Aye.
Commissioner Rossen?
Aye.
And Commissioner Vanderwell?
Aye.
Thank you. Passes unanimously. And the fifth and final motion is for the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan Amendment Sponsorship Request.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Vanderwell, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to forward a recommendation of support to City Council to sponsor an amendment to the 2019 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan for a site thirty-four point seven one acres in size to change the regional land designation from rural area to Tier Two land and amend the boundaries of the Truckee Meadows Service Area and City of Sparks sphere of influence to include the site based on the facts as set forth in the staff report.
Thank you. We have a second?
Commissioner Peterson will second.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion by Commissioner Vanderwell and a second by Commissioner Peterson. Any discussion before we vote? Yes, Commissioner Carey?
Madam Chair, just a couple of quick comments for the record. I will be supporting the motion. I view these TMRPA amendments pretty consistent with our master plan and the new regional plan. I think adding this prior property into the TMSA, the proposed tiering change, and the addition to the sphere of influence are consistent with what we're trying to do in this area. I think it's pretty minor, and it's very, very technical stuff, but I think it's a pretty minor, minor change in general. And I hope that the City Council will support this amendment to the plan. I would just like to say, you know, it took three years, about three years, to get the regional plan updated, and it's cool to see that we're finally able to work on it. Perhaps if the regional plan took three and a half years to get updated, we, this amendment probably could have been rolled into the update. And it is pretty consistent and minor in nature. Just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Any other discussion before we vote? Seeing none. Can we please do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Blaco?
Aye.
Commissioner Carey?
Aye.
Commissioner Pritzos?
Aye.
Commissioner Rossen?
Aye.
And Commissioner Vanderwell?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks again, Sienna and staff. That was a huge presentation. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks again, Sienna and staff. That was a huge presentation, and you guys did a very thorough job, and I thought you did really good on presenting that much information. Next are general business items, which there are none. So let's go ahead and move on to open to general public comment, limited to items that are not on the agenda. Casey, can you please repeat the call and information?
The telephone number for call and participation during the general public comment period is 1-669-900-6833, and the meeting ID is 970-0927. I'm sorry, that was wrong. The meeting ID number is 962-4203-7566, and press *9 to request to speak.
Do we have any callers wanting to speak?
I don't have any requests to speak at this time.
All right, thank you. Let's go ahead then and close public comment and move on to announcements from staff and commissioners.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Vanderwell, and I don't know if I can do it here, but I would like to, if there's a possibility to ask staff, since it's been brought up by Commissioner Carey twice during this meeting regarding the MG4 policy and making sure that we have enough commercial land for employment. I guess what my question is, is since we've got such a large demand for housing and things like that, and since we have Tahoe Renewal Industrial Park and then the additional 40 acres out in Fernley that's also going to be industrial, and that is going to put more housing pressure on the City of Sparks as at this moment in time, they are not proposing any housing in there. So I guess what my question is, is there something that we can do to make that policy a little more flexible?
Madam Chair, if I may, ask Commissioner Vanderwell to clarify a question a bit. You're looking for staff to address additional flexibility in which policy specifically?
MG4. I apologize.
Okay, we can certainly address that at a future study session.
Okay, thank you. It's been brought up twice during this meeting, and I think it's something that we possibly need to have further discussion about it as changes with employment and how employment is happening is changing, but demand of housing is still increasing.
Yeah, I think there's a couple of other pieces to that. One is, you know, I think we could probably review with you again some of the findings of the fiscal impact analysis, the long-term fiscal impact analysis. And then, you know, we are in the process of preparing some amendments to the regional, I'm sorry, to the comprehensive plan for purposes of bringing it in conformance with the 2019 regional plan. So there's an opportunity there perhaps to address some of these questions and concerns. You know, I think now's not the time or place to go into it in much detail, but obviously there's a lot of change going on in the commercial real estate sector, changes, some of which are being accelerated by the COVID pandemic. And so, you know, it's certainly worthy of a conversation.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Vanderwell, Normando. Any other comments from the commissioners or staff? I'd like to wish everyone a safe and happy Independence Day celebration. And if there are no further comments, then I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everyone, for hanging in there. Forward, everyone.
Happy Independence Day.